All right, so our last public hearing tonight is the family-friendly residential section of the design guidelines. I think Charlie is going to give us the staff report.
All right, I'm Diana tonight for this item. Diana Keena, who did all the heavy lifting on this along with Catherine Burpo and Arnold Mamarella, our consultant, but Diana is on vacation, so I will be making the presentation on her behalf, and then Catherine and Arnold are available to answer questions, any questions you may have. So this is a long time coming, and we're here tonight to present to you our proposal for the family-friendly design guidelines. This is an amendment to the existing Emeryville Design Guidelines that were adopted in 2010. Currently, the existing design guidelines have a section on residential development, and within that section, there is one guideline on family-friendly design, and it's got about six bullet points, I think, under it. So what this amendment would do would be it would add an entire section on family-friendly design to replace that one guideline, and then make residential a separate companion section. In addition, and I'll get into that in a little more detail, in addition, we're also recommending that the commission initiate an amendment to the planning regulations, which we can bring back later, to modify slightly the bonus system, because it has a provision in it about family-friendly, one little thing, that is slightly at odds with what we're recommending in the guidelines. So by way of background, as you may recall, you had a hearing about the proposed guidelines back in June of 2013. You continued it at that point, and we've been thinking about it ever since. The Planning Commission had a retreat in May of last year where you visited four affordable family-friendly projects, and that was very informative, certainly informative for staff, and I think it was very informative to the commission as well, and it caused us to rethink a little bit some of the things that we had in the proposal. Throughout 2014, various architects and staff from various departments have commented on these draft guidelines. As you know, in November of 2014, just last November, the housing element was adopted, and it was just certified a few weeks ago by the state, and it includes some policies about developing family-friendly design guidelines. And just a couple of weeks ago, at the meeting where the moratorium was considered but not passed, the council gave clear direction that we need to think more about family-friendly housing and the unit mix. So what we have done here is, in the residential section, not the family-friendly section, but just the general residential section, we moved a number of guidelines from the family-friendly section to the general residential section, because it occurred to us that these things were appropriate in any residential development, in family-friendly or not. And that included things like transition space from units to open space, community voluntary purpose rooms, coats and linen closets, closed stairways. We also added provisions about kitchen ventilation, mailbox placement, showing furniture in plans, which is incredibly helpful as opposed to a blank plan, and ways to maximize sunlight. This is an example of a diagram that's in the guidelines, and this is actually a real piece of the 3706 San Pablo Avenue project that you recently approved. This is in the first floor where they have the various amenities for that project. We thought that was a good example of how that can be done. Actually, I believe this drawing is also 3706. So to recap what was in the June 2013 version of the guidelines, and this is in the family-friendly section now, we divided those guidelines into sort of two major areas. One is guidelines for the overall project, and the other is guidelines for the individual units. So what we had in June of 2013 was that units should be next to open space, there should be play areas, there should be gathering places for teens and pre-teens, family bike parking, and considering exclusive access to sections of large projects. So that's really more of a security concern if you're in a building that has, you know, a number of wings to it, or a complex that has a number of different buildings that you would only have access to the part of it that you lived in. And then for units, the 2013 version included enclosed foyers, windows into play areas, wide halls for play, that's within the unit, so the kids can run around inside the unit, and spaces that can change uses as children grow. Since then, we have added some things to the guidelines for projects, and that includes that there should be two- or three-bedroom units in, two or three bedrooms in any family-friendly unit, shouldn't be any less than that, and the minimum for a two-bedroom unit should be, minimum area should be 900 square feet, and the minimum area for a three-bedroom should be 1,100 square feet. This is based on looking at actual projects. There should be a variety of units, including flats and two-story units, there should be convenient parking. Laundry options, originally, we said that every unit should have laundry hookups, but after touring the units, touring the projects in last May, we found that some of those projects didn't have laundries in every unit, and actually, some of them had communal laundries that the operators and developers and the people who lived there seemed to like, because it created kind of a gathering place, and parents can go do the laundry if it's adjacent to a play area while the kids are out there playing. And in fact, at Vice Chair Tan's request, we did take a look at the most recent projects that have been approved through the pipeline, and we found that four of them do have laundry hookups in each unit. That includes ME, Park on Powell, 39th and Adeline, and 3800 San Pablo, the intersection. They all have laundry hookups in each unit. But the one that's purported to be affordable, family-friendly, 3706 San Pablo, does not have hookups in every unit. It has the communal laundry rooms. So we thought the little flexibility was in order here, so give them the option of either in the units or the communal laundry rooms. And that's the change that needs to be made to the planning regulations, because it calls specifically for hookups in each unit. And then how the units relate to streets and open space. This is a diagram that we've added that kind of illustrates the adjacency of different units. I'm not going to go through it in detail, but if you have questions, we can come back to this. You have an example of a noisy street on a quiet street, and it's annotated to show, you know, where the living rooms, bedrooms, and other things are located. One thing I would point out here is if you notice, the kitchens and bath and storage, which is represented by the K, are typically back on the interior of the unit away from the windows, and the window spaces are reserved for the bedrooms and the living areas, and I'll talk more about that in a second. Then for the individual units, we added these provisions, that there should only be one master suite, so you don't get a unit that's got two, or even three, master suites that have their own bathrooms and walk-in closets and so forth, because those are clearly for roommates, not for families. There should be distinct living, dining, and kitchen spaces, there should be soundproofing between floors and ceilings, each unit should have a balcony, deck, or patio, there should be some indoor space to store strollers and toys. The dining and living areas should each accommodate all family members, so everybody can gather in the living room or the dining room. Each bedroom should have access to a bath, that doesn't mean its own private bath, but there should be access to a bath from each bedroom, and that windows should accept toddler locks. So now, there's some diagrams that show individual units. This is a kind of a block diagram that is, we call this an aspect diagram. I'm not going to go through every one of these things in detail, but just to explain what this is, it's showing how you would lay out the living areas, the bedroom areas, kitchen storage space in relation to the windows and the more solid walls. So the living areas are in green, the bedrooms are in yellow, kitchen and storage space is in gray. Then the walls that have windows are these light blue lines. The walls that don't have windows, that are either interior or adjacent to another unit, are these heavier lines. Balconies or patios are these crosshatch things.
So these are in plan view?
Well, most of them are in plan view. There's one that's a section, which says right there, "section."
Oh, okay, I see, all right.
And then the little dashed arrows are views to the outside, that's the aspect, and then the little red triangle shows where the front door of the unit is. So like I say, I won't go through all of them, but just here's an example of a flat, typical flat, where you'd have the living area here and the bedrooms here, both facing window walls facing out, and then the front door on this side, and then the kind of back-of-house stuff, if you will, the kitchen and bathroom things back here, and then your deck or patio or balcony, whatever, is obviously is over here. So you have different, you have corner units and through units and so forth. This up here illustrates the top and bottom floor of a two-floor unit. This is a section through a possible loft space, where the loft would be up here, and then this would be like a double-height living area with the kitchen tucked in under the loft. So this then informs how you lay out your units, and then these are typical unit plans. Again, I won't go through every one, but these are based on that block aspect diagram. So you can see the decks and the little red triangles that represent the front doors, and the solid lines that represent the interior walls, and the little blue lines that represent where the windows are. And you can see, we've shown the furniture, and so you have your bedrooms and your bathroom. So if you look at this one over here, you have the baths and the kitchen and the storage and, you know, the little study area, all back here away from the windows, and then over here, you have your living, dining, and three bedrooms, all with windows, and the front door is over here. So we've got a number of diagrams that illustrate those kinds of things, typical layouts of what would be a family-friendly unit. One thing I would like to point out is that the bedrooms don't necessarily have to be next to each other. I guess in these, they mostly are. But that's been a bit of a debate as to whether you have to have the kid's bedroom next to the parent's bedroom. And some people like that, and some people don't, and it kind of depends on what stage of life your kid is in also. But the fundamental guidelines that address this issue are, first, there should only be one master suite, and secondly, every bedroom should have access to a bathroom without having to walk across a living space. So previously, we said every bedroom should be accessible to every other bedroom without having to walk across a living space, and we've taken that out, because we think that's a little too rigid. We think that there are plenty of families who would prefer to have the kids over there and the parents over here. So we think that's okay. Now, the amendment, as I said, that we need to make to the planning regulations is that currently, in the bonus point system, they require in-unit laundries for family-friendly bonus. We believe there are other options that can work, such as communal gathering laundry spaces, and the guidelines, the proposed guidelines, do provide those options, so we're suggesting that that requirement be deleted from the bonus requirements. So that's kind of the meat of what we're talking about tonight. I just want to segue now, for a second, into a discussion of unit mix. This is not part of the action that's before you tonight, but it's an issue that we need to address, so this is just to start that conversation, because in my director's report at the beginning of the meeting, I said we're working on a game plan. We are working on a game plan, this is part of the game plan. It hasn't been all fleshed out yet, so I don't have anything to share with you yet, but hopefully we will soon. So this is just census data that tells us what the unit mix is in Emeryville, Berkeley, and Oakland.
Excuse me, does that include single-family houses?
Yes, this is all dwelling units. So we have, in Emeryville, we have 13% studios, 49% one-bedroom, 31% two-bedroom, 7% three-bedroom or larger. Our average unit has 1.32 bedrooms. Berkeley has 8% studios, 27% one-bedroom, 30% two-bedroom, and 35% three-or-more bedrooms, with an average of 2.11 bedrooms per unit. And Oakland has 7% studios, 25% one-bedroom, 33% two-bedroom, and 35% three-or-more, with an average of 2.1 bedrooms per unit. Berkeley and Oakland are pretty similar. The reason Emeryville is so heavy on the studios and light on the three-bedrooms is primarily because we have so many units that are in large apartment buildings. That tends to be what the mix you get in larger buildings. So these, you know, some of these here are single-family homes, the three. Now, the Ambassador and 3706 projects, however, which were city-sponsored projects, and are affordable, family-friendly projects, tend to reflect the unit mixes that you find in Berkeley and Oakland, more than the unit mixes that you find in the rest of Emeryville. So at Ambassador, we have 1.99 bedrooms per unit, and at 3706 San Pablo, we have 2.10. Now, of course, again, those projects were heavily subsidized by the city, so they're not, they're not market rate projects. We found that in Toronto, and I believe also in Vancouver, two cities in Canada, require 10, a minimum of 10% three-bedroom units. So we're thinking about possibly amending the planning regulations to put in some kind of a requirement for unit mix, and we would welcome any insights the commission may have about that issue tonight. One possibility would be to have a minimum percentage of larger units for multi-unit residential projects in general, and then if someone is seeking the family-friendly, and I should also say that we could also require that some or all of the larger units be designed to comply with the family-friendly guidelines, then if someone wanted to provide more family-friendly units than what was required in order to get bonuses, that they might also then have to provide a higher percentage of larger units. So that's one possibility. All of this obviously needs further study, needs public input, needs more discussion by the Planning Commission and the City Council, and ultimately, it could become a part of the amendments to the planning regulations that would include the little tweak to the laundry section. So that's the presentation. I do want to point out one thing about the staff report. I hope you weren't confused by it. Frankly, when I looked at it, I found it a little confusing, because we included in the packet the full report from June of 2013, including the guidelines as they were proposed at that time, and then we also included the guidelines as they are proposed at this time. So you should be looking at the pages that are at the back of the packet. Those are the guidelines that are proposed now. The ones that are attached to the June 2013 report, that was then, this is now. So except that the June 2013 report does include two pages that are to be deleted with big red Xs through them, we're still proposing to delete those two pages. But the new pages are the ones that are at the back of your packet, and you can just ignore the other ones unless you want to look at them for reference. So that concludes my report. I'd be happy to respond to any questions you may have, or defer to Catherine or Arnold.
Well, I don't agree with you in these plan layouts at all. I think breaking up these common spaces into separate rooms is a real mistake.
May I excuse me, Commissioner Cardozo, may I suggest that you stick to questions right now, and then have your discussion after you hold the public hearing?
Sorry.
That's all right. Thanks. All right, so are there any questions for staff?
I had a question about the concept of possibly requiring that there be family-friendly housing, but there's this other thing that needs to be addressed, and I'm not sure if that could be required, which is to have a certain percent of affordability, you know, units that are affordable, because it's, they can't be uncoupled, in my opinion, so what?
It's illegal.
Well, we did adopt the housing impact fee, which goes towards addressing the affordability issue, right? So as part of that, correct me if I'm wrong, but an applicant can either pay the fee for the impact towards affordable housing, or provide the units in lieu?
That's right, but I think what Commissioner Curly is getting at is that maybe we want more affordability than that, and we cannot, we cannot require that. Our inclusionary zoning that we used to have was struck down by the courts, so we can't just come flat out and say you must provide X number for rental. We can for ownership, and we do still for ownership. It's 20% moderate rate, that's the starting point. But for rental, we can't require it, but we can incentivize it. For example, we could have a provision that, you know, certain bonuses are only available to projects that have certain level of affordability that's higher than would normally be required. Similarly, for ownership housing, we can't require that either, but we could have an incentive that says, you know, this particular bonus is only available to you if you provide ownership units. That's obviously part of this big discussion we have to have.
And the ownership versus rental was also struck down, is that why that's not?
No, it wasn't.
No, well, this-
I would like more direction from the city attorney on that, actually, so maybe he can address that.
About requiring somebody who wants to build housing to say you can, you must build rental versus ownership?
Yeah, can we do it?
No.
And for-
I mean, your authority is to regulate use, and you're getting into the ownership of property, and you don't have the right to regulate the ownership of property.
So that's why we say we would, rather than require it, we could incentivize it. We could offer some great benefit to the project, whatever that may be, only if it's ownership, or a portion of it is ownership.
Can you tell me, I'm really kind of confused looking at the packet, I think, and it could have been what you described, that there's too much information that was outdated or something? So is this, what we're looking at tonight, is it mostly just rearranging existing recommendations? Or if not, what are we adding? Can you show me a screen on here of what the things we're adding? And are we adding regulations, or are we adding guidelines?
Oh, guidelines.
So this is all strictly just guidelines? Nothing is putting into effect that this has to be done?
Well, yes and no. I mean, I wouldn't say just guidelines. Guidelines, they don't exactly have the force of law, but the planning regulations do require that when you approve a design review application, or staff approves a minor design review application, that they must conform to the guidelines, or if they don't, the applicant has to show that they've made a good-faith effort to conform to the intent of the guidelines. So if you have like 12 guidelines and they met 10 of them, they didn't meet the other two, but they did the best they could, you know, and you say, well, it's okay, it meets the intent.
Okay, with that in mind, I understand.
But, but, excuse me, let me just continue. No, but for the family-friendly part, right now, we don't have a requirement in the code that units have to be family-friendly. So that's one of the things we need to talk about if we want to add that requirement to the code. So the family-friendly guidelines only apply if someone is requesting bonus points, or if it's a city-sponsored project where we make them comply. But other than that, the family-friendly guidelines will not, are not required, so perhaps we need a code amendment to address that.
Okay, so-
And that would, how would that?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, and that would be through the City Council, yes, the code?
Well, yeah, I mean, it would be amendment to the planning regulations that would be processed just like any amendment to the planning regulations. It would come to the commission for a recommendation, and it would go to the council as an ordinance to amend the code.
And it would take months to do it? And it'd have to be approved by the state, too, or not?
No, it doesn't have to be approved by the state.
But we could initiate the process to do that.
Yeah, that's-
Well, that's part of the game plan that we're working on.
This is where I'm confused. We're talking about a game plan, and that we further have to talk about family-friendly housing, and what that's going to stipulate, and how we're going to put that in, but in the resolution, I'm reading that, part of the resolution is that design guidelines, including Guidelines J22 regarding family-friendly housing. So on, in the resolution, are we recommending to council that they take these things into consideration now, even though we haven't had this discussion? This is where I'm confused, I really don't know what we're approving and what we're putting forward.
Your recommendation to the council is to adopt these amendments to the Emeryville Design Guidelines to address family-friendly housing.
Okay.
And-
Can you go back to the slideshow and show me the list of these things that are to the friendly, family-friendly guidelines?
Well, we just summarized it in the slideshow. I can, let me hang on a second here.
I just don't know what we're adding to each of these projects by putting this in. It's not clear to me what we're adding or asking the developer in addition to what we've already been asking, so that's where I'm unclear.
Definition as to what it means.
Yeah. Oh, that would be helpful, but are we adding more regulations?
All right, here is, oh, boy. Can I, just want to fit the page. Oh, here we go. Oh, boy. Ah. Hmm. Ah, that doesn't work. Maybe this, oh, look at that. Ah, that's really not what I wanted either, but anyway, okay. This, this is the old stuff, this is what you should ignore. Okay, we are proposing to delete all of this and all of this, page 65, and 64 and 65 of the current document. That doesn't mean we're getting rid of all of this stuff, it just means we're rearranging it. So these two pages go away.
Right, that's what I'm confused, you're saying you're rearranging things, but yet then we're adding things, and that's where I'm, I'm not really clear on, what I'm really most concerned, what are we adding new?
I'm going to just show you that. Just hang on. So this is what's being deleted, most of which is being kept. This stuff here is the previous version that you shouldn't look at. Okay, this is what we're adding. We're adding a section on residential. This is just generic residential, not necessarily family-friendly with examples.
And this doesn't currently exist.
Some of these policies, of these guidelines do currently exist, and some have been embellished or have been added. Yeah, this isn't redlined, so you can't really tell what's new.
That's where I'm setting the problem, because I didn't get my packet till Monday. I didn't really have a lot of time to go through this process. We're using from Saturday, I would have, so I'm really-
So this is new, well, this is new or rearranged, a lot of it is new. Here's the aspect drawings, this-
The aspect drawings are new?
Yes.
Okay.
All the diagrams are new. And then, so this is all pertaining to just residential, so this would apply to any residential project, whether they're applying for bonus points or not, and whether they're city-subsidized or not. These would all apply to everybody. Now, we have a new section on family-friendly residential, which takes the previous one guideline that had like six bullet points and embellishes it, and so now you've got Guidelines J39 through J60 that are specifically about family-friendly, and this has the diagrams that I showed you.
So we're adding a lot?
Adding a lot. Yeah, we're replacing two pages with about eight pages, seven or eight pages.
Thank you.
And most of the current stuff is kept, but a lot has been added. Is that-
That answers my question.
Answer your question. Any further questions for me? So, okay. Yeah, whatever. All right, do you want to open the public hearing then?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
All right, so with that, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing, so if anyone would like to speak on this item, please come forward.
Hi, Judith Timmel, and I'm a member of Residents United. We have been concerned with this problem for a long time. We're very excited that this is coming up. We think this is really an answer to a huge housing crisis that we have in the city. We have a lot of anecdotal evidence that people with children are moving out of the city. In my own complex, we've had a family with two teenagers leave because they had one bathroom and two. and two bedrooms. Just not doable. So, definitely really needed, and I hope you'll give this really serious consideration. Just to respond briefly, I haven't had a chance to look at the packet, just from what was said this evening. Yes, affordability is definitely a part of family-friendly, and I think that you all need to think about adding that element. Don't stop at three bedrooms, because really, people with two or three children need even four bedrooms. In terms of the laundry room, there was a question brought up about community laundry. And the place where I live is cohousing, and we have definitely built in these aspects. We have a common laundry. We have a placement of our mailboxes that's centrally located, so that people really have a chance to run into each other. And so, when you're thinking about design guidelines, think also about guidelines that promote community, common spaces for kids to play, for example. So, I think that would really add to this, these guidelines. And in terms of, going back to the affordable, sorry, I haven't organized this, definitely giving developers the option of just paying into a fund for affordable housing. Apparently, the amounts that they're paying in are not sufficient to really build anything. So, really, the option, we would prefer the option of having them actually build affordable units into the building that they are building, so that we know that these units are going to be built. Finally, there may be a problem with calling this family-friendly, now that I believe the legal definition of family has been changed, and now includes one person as a family, or two unrelated, or two related people. So, anyway, thank you.
Excuse me, could every, each speaker sign in on the clipboard over there after you've spoken? Thanks.
Good evening. My name's Rod Henley, Emeryville homeowner, and an architect who's done, completed more than 3,000 units of affordable housing. I'm currently working with RCD in Baldysey, and I know that you've visited some of their complexes. And I speak in favor, of course, with the general tenor of the guidelines, but specifically, there are some that I'm quite concerned about, would limit the capability of affordable housing developers to build adequate units in your city. First, for example, the unit areas of 900 square feet for two, and 1,100 for three is more than we would usually provide for affordable housing developments. By comparison, for example, the California TCAC standards, which define minimums for affordable housing, are 750 and 1,000 square feet. Normally, for a two-bedroom flat, that is, one-story unit, we would use 800 to 850 square feet. There's no developer with which I have worked that would have allowed us to build 900-square-foot two-bedroom unit. So, my suggestion would be to take the unit areas down to 850 and 1050, which I think are more compatible with affordable housing guidelines. Secondly, the goal to have a variety of units, flats and two-story units in the same project is a great goal, but hopefully, it's not a, it's more of a recommendation, because it is very difficult in many of these affordable housing developments to have townhouse units in some of the sites, in some of the situations. Next, on the laundry option, I'm very glad to hear that it's not recommended that it be within the building, or within each unit, because almost all of the affordable housing developments do in fact have common rooms, which does build community, and also allows for more space within the unit, and also reduces cost. Next is the requirement about a balcony, deck, or patio for every unit. That's very difficult for affordable housing units, and usually does not happen. It's desirable, of course, but usually does not happen, and my question would be about how the difficulty is if we're not meeting the city layout, city recommendations. The next factor is about the layouts. The width-to-depth ratio that is shown in these plans, I think is highly questionable, in that, yes, it's desirable, but the wider the units are, and the shallower they are, the fewer units you're able to get in the same site. And I think if you were to look at the plans, for example, of leading affordable housing architects like Daniel Solomon and David Baker, their whole strategy is how can you make deeper, less wide units, so that you can get the maximum number of units on the site, which is always the goal. And almost always, our sites are too small. So, when you have very wide, shallow units, you get fewer units on the site. Distinct living dining kitchen is a problem, I think, and then finally, the bedroom separated. I'm glad to hear that they can be separated, because there are many people that do prefer that, such as in-law units, or grandmothers that are living, and that sort of thing. So, thank you.
Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll bring this back for discussion. You want to start it off?
Sure. Yeah, there's some items in here that I question. The placing, the living, one of, this is actually part of the residential portion, but the component where it talks about placing living areas along exterior walls, and placing kitchens and baths, and storage areas along interior walls, that's J-27. And in my experience, that's sort of, that can contradict J-29, which is about maintaining a sense of privacy from within a unit, and then also contradicts some other components about visual connection to community open spaces. Because a lot of times, what I've found is that people don't want to be seen when they're in their living rooms, so if the living room is facing a community open space, or a street, they're going to have their blinds down, you know, or shades closed. Whereas, if there's a kitchen facing a community open space, or a street, people don't really seem to mind being at the sink, or, you know, cooking, looking out a window, and being seen in the same way. And they're also looking, likely to be looking out a window when they're at a sink than they are if they're in their living room. And so, I feel like that could maybe be loosened up a little bit, so that it's not so strict. And with all these diagrams, it seems to really sort of solidify this structure that I think is not necessarily always the most beneficial. And then, I agree with the comments about the square footages. I mean, if there are affordable housing developments that are going to be attempting to meet the family-friendly guidelines, they're not going to be able to do so with the funding sources that are generally available with the square footages that are listed here. I think that many units that have great rooms were perfect for families, and dividing up living, dining, kitchen spaces into distinct spaces can create, especially in a smaller unit, creates a real sense of claustrophobia, and I don't know that it necessarily creates a more family-friendly unit. It actually kind of makes it harder to sort of supervise if you have multiple kids doing different things in different spaces. The J-52, the enclosing entry foyers to reduce noise and increase privacy, I mean, I actually think that if, especially if you've got units near streets or community open spaces, a foyer is not a good idea necessarily, in that it's basically limiting your unit more for open space, whereas, the goal might actually be to have an easier flow into the community open space. And then, the private balcony, you know, providing balconies, decks, patios, I think for a lot of, you know, a lot of developments, the space is tight, you're being asked to put in as many units as possible, and you've got this formula that you're working with with regard to ratios of private open space and public or communal open space. And I think in, for family-friendly housing, it might be more beneficial to actually have more community open space than to have a lot of private balconies. Those are just some of my initial comments.
I think that this is a really excellent start, and I'm interested actually to hear our consultants' responses to some of the comments from the last speaker, because I think you raised a lot of really interesting points. And what we want, you know, we certainly want ideal housing situations, but we want ones that are going to get built, so, can we get it?
Consultant up? Yeah, sure. Do you want to come up?
Hi, nice to see you tonight. Yeah, I think a lot of this is coming down to what you have now, and what you get now, and what you might want to get in the future, so that you have units that do things that the current units don't do, that are more family-friendly. So, there's an issue of getting more units that are three-bedroom in the community, but then there's the issue of the design of the units, and what makes it family-friendly. And to get to some of the questions and comments that are being brought up, like, how did we get to this type of unit layouts, and why didn't we get here? And so, some of the big questions that are going to come up is like, okay, do you separate living spaces, or do you keep one big open space, like for dining room, living room? So, having a big, open, great-room space is really nice, and a lot of people like that. But, what we found is that in a lot of housing developments now, what you're getting is the living areas are getting shrunken down so much, because all of the space is being dedicated to bedrooms and bathrooms and stuff like that, that you really hardly have a functional living room, let alone a space for a table. So, you end up without adequate space for any sort of dining table. If you look at unit plans, you often see them kind of floating a little round table somewhere there, wherever they can put it. So, by having these separation of spaces, it sort of kind of forces you to sort of think about, well, how am I going to provide for that space? Now, certainly, people can design other spaces, that combine them and make that work. That's not an issue. But, we're trying to get to a problem that we have with what's being currently on the market. And so, that's how we sort of were coming to some of these layouts, and we're trying to keep the floor area down as much as possible, but still sort of address things that would be comfortable for families. On the foyer issue, I think that's really only intended to be for when you have an interior corridor, and then you have a foyer off of that that enclose privacy. When you have an exterior entrance, the diagram shows it's pretty much an open foyer. It's maybe a vestibule or something, but it really opens up to the unit, and allows for observation on the street. So, that was really more about those interior kind of type of situations for corridor buildings. The other thing that I don't know if I'm shifting out of what you're asked, and I'm sorry if I am, go back and redirect me on that, but also trying to get some more corners on buildings, so buildings have some daylight into them. What we're finding is, because of the exact thing that one of the speakers spoke to about trying to get as many units on properties as possible, units are tending to be, they're not very wide, and they're very deep. So, what happens is on a frontage, you get more units on that frontage, which is good for your numbers of units. But, the deep units can often become very inefficient. When they're deep, they're, you get this floor area, but you don't get a lot of features that you might want in a unit. So, having a shallower unit does some things. It allows for more light in the unit, and it allows for these bedrooms to be on the outside wall, and allows for the living room to be a little bit bigger, because these living rooms are getting very shrunken in these units, whether a market or affordable. And not every unit in the project has to be family-friendly. We have to distinguish between affordable housing projects and other projects that may have family-friendly units. And I think that's one of the discussions you might want to have in that area. So, I don't know if I answered all of the things that you brought up, but at least maybe started to answer some of those questions.
Thank you. I'm going to pass for now.
Okay. Okay, where to start? So, I think this is a good start. I think there's a lot more discussion, though, that needs to take place, because this is quite a task to tackle. And I think that, right now, we're facing kind of a conundrum in how we define affordable housing, and affordable housing that's family-friendly, affordable housing that's not necessarily for families, and then there's the family-friendly guidelines, and there's just overall residential guidelines. So, I think there needs to be, you know, flexibility in what we're going to be recommending. The things that I think are great features that have been added are definitely taking into account the toddler safety, and having adequate storage for stroller parking, and then also having views onto the play area. I agree with Commissioner Gunkel with regard to the kitchens facing the play areas or facing the common areas. That was something that I mentioned during one of our initial studies. Let me go to some specific areas. Yeah, so that spoke to the J-27 and J-29 being in conflict, when you have your living or your kitchen along the back, and not along the area that faces the common areas. Item number J-35, which talks about including entry coat closet into units that have two or more bedrooms, I think that this is really important to have additional storage when you have larger units, which potentially, you may have a family or more people, and they need that corresponding storage. And, so J-48, that's the issue with the laundry. So, currently, it says to provide laundry facilities that are convenient access near common areas, and it kind of covers everything. It includes adding washer-dry hookups in units. I think, again, I think we need to strike a balance between, I think having a communal laundry is great. I think that it definitely encourages community, and it encourages the ability to watch, you know, what your kids are doing while you're doing laundry. But, at the same time, you know, having three kids, and having, you know, the laundry running nonstop, I would be challenged to always schlep my stuff to the communal laundry, and I think I'm not the only one who would feel that way. So, I think there needs to be some flexibility of having washer-dryer hookups in certain units, or a percentage of units, or in units that are located further away from the laundry J-50, with regard to the distinct living, dining, and kitchen spaces, I agree with Commissioner Gunkel with regard to opening, having the great room. I've experienced that personally. When we bought our house, we remodeled it, and we tore out the wall between the kitchen and the living room, because it allowed us to cook and supervise the kids at all ages, and really have that interaction, you know, when we have friends over, et cetera. But, I also noticed that in the units that we have, the residential developments that we have, there isn't really a distinct dining space, and you're right about that, having that floating table. So, again, I'm going to say we need to have a balance, and not really just say one thing, that you need to have a variety. I am kind of concerned about, I think it's, I guess one of the conundrums is, you know, we want to provide as much affordable housing as possible, but I kind of, I feel troubled with the statement of, we need to, you know, shove as many units as possible on these sites, because I think it implies that we're just packing them in, and I think that that's not a totally, I don't think that's a good situation. I think that affordable housing units also need to have those amenities and that flexibility, and not just cookie cutter boxes. I think that's all I had. And then, I guess after we wrap up this discussion, we'll segue into the unit mix discussion, which isn't really part of this, but something we want to give some feedback to staff on. So, I have some comments there to do.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks.
I also agree with other commissioner comments about the split up of the main living areas, living room, dining room, kitchen. I think they should be opened into one major space. My daughter has three kids, remodeled her house to open them all up, because that's where they live. That's where their life really goes on. And to split them all up into separate sections, I don't think makes any sense. I think you can design it so there is a specific place for the dining room table within that space, so that doesn't get left out. But that there's no reason to have all these little walls in there splitting it up. You know, it's in the olden days when the servants were in the kitchen, and you had the door shut. People don't live that way anymore. And, you know, I put together a 180-unit affordable housing development about 10 years ago that had 51% of the units, three or four bedroom. And I put washer-dryer hookups in the three and four bedroom units, and not on the one and twos. And there was a communal laundry room, and 90% of the people hooked up the washer and dryer in their units where they had the availability to do it. So and I also think we have to think about the square footage size, which, you know, if we were in New York City, and we had a high-income group of people wanting three and four bedroom units, and they raised their children in the city, it'd be fine. But I don't think we have a market for that kind of apartment in this area. So that's really my comment.
So I think that there's, I agree about the possibility of distinct living and dining that is not necessary, but also could it be possible to show both? And say that there's, both options are available? And make sure that if there is a great room, that it allows for adequate room for both living and dining, and show that. I think that Commissioner Tan's idea of laundry units being included if there's a certain distance away from the communal laundry, as well as the possibility of, say, units that are three and four bedroom, having their own, for sure, their own hookups because of, you know, just general time accessibility issues. The private open space is not necessarily, I think that was a very good point, is not necessarily needed and could be better utilized as a larger communal open space. So I think that being flexible, and I know we're trying to create some guidelines, but I want to make sure they're not too rigid. So having that be open. And I have a huge problem with kitchens being along the back walls, because that is, that's where the eyes are on the street, for sure, is right at the kitchen sink. So I agreed with Commissioner Gunkel on that. And I like that, I think that we can say foyers are preferred on interior corridors, and that would solve the sort of odd foyer problem everywhere. And I also, I thought that was a very good point about the square footage, and I think that needs to be looked at more carefully to make sure that things can get built. In general, I also have a problem with the fact that we're trying to squeeze everything in. And that is all, you know, people's well-being is at the expense of someone else's profit, and it pisses me off. So just going to say that now. And I also think ghettoizing affordable housing developments is part of the problem we have here. So moving on.
Okay, well, I'm going to take a different approach to this. So far in the city, we've adopted guidelines and regulations in 2010 and 2013, respectively, all aimed at attracting families with children. Since the guidelines and regulations were enacted, we've seen the completion of the Ambassador Housing Project and the approval of the 3706 San Pablo Affordable Housing, both successes in my book. I don't feel that more regulations will give us what we're looking for. And this is why I'd like to provide some examples of how enhancing, or enacting regulations does not ensure that families will move to Emeryville. When the bakery loss opened its third phase, they included two three-bedroom units. When I took a tour of that complex, one of the units was rented by a married couple with no children, and the second unit was rented by three men, presumably men, students at UC Berkeley. Emmy Apartments had just started their leasing last weekend, and of their five three-bedroom units that have been leased, sadly, not one unit has any children. The leasing agent told me that the one she leased was leased to students. In addition to this information, I'd like to give you an example of how bedroom count is less of a consideration to parents than things we, as a city, can truly control. And that's improving our city, or fixing our city to attract more families. Over the years, I've talked to several new Bay Area residents, or new people to the Bay Area, or people leaving Emeryville for other Bay Area cities. At different times, I've talked to three new hires at UC Berkeley School Public Health where I work. These were a mix of faculty and staff members, and I asked if they looked into moving to Emeryville. Without exaggeration, of the three questions I received, they were in this order: how are your schools? Where do my children play? And how safe is your community? Not one time did one of these people ask me, how many three-bedroom units do you have? Or what are your housing stock? And of the two families I talked to who were moving out of PPP, they singularly answered, the question was, why they were moving out of Emeryville was to put their kids in better schools. Not one of these expressed a need or desire for a larger home, because PPP, three, two bedrooms is the only size we have, and we have children. I have seen people, kids grow up from 12 years old to college that are in our building, and they all went to private schools. So even if we adopt more regulations, I still don't understand how we're going to assure that families with childrens get these homes without breaking the law. I feel that until we resolve this issue, all building regulations are moot when it comes to attracting families and children. The way I see it, the most important thing for us to do is create a city that in and of itself attracts families. If a family likes a certain place, they will work out their living arrangements. And I feel that we've done, that what we've done by creating guidelines and regulations in 2010 and 2013, we've created the tools to help provide family-friendly housing. Personally, I feel we should put our energy into doing things that we legally can do without question. Things that will improve our community for everyone currently living in Emeryville or those who come. And I'd like to offer these, I'd like to offer us a different direction that will attract more families to Emeryville. I feel that if we, number one, continue with the ECL, fostering new and innovative ideas in schooling, will make our schools better and more attractive. Now, I admit, when it comes to schools and running schools, I am totally out in left field. I don't have children. I don't really know what makes a school work better, other than what I went through in school. But some idea of further improving schools is maybe what we do is limit the amount of out-of-city students that we take, that we can pick and choose the children of a higher academic level that come to our school, because this is our school, and I would think we might be able to control that. I don't know. Or maybe we can look at the ECL becoming a charter school. Those are just things that, because what I'm hearing is schools are important, and I think we're doing that with the ECL, and maybe we can improve upon that. Secondly, I think we need to use our general plan and our Parks and Recreation Strategic Plan to provide more and expanded recreation programs. Creating better access to the park and the marina would go a long way, and what we're doing with the Largent-Christie Park and et cetera. And three, support and expand our tax base to continue funding our own police department, help businesses thrive and grow in Emeryville, attract more businesses to Emeryville so we have a strong, diverse, and stable economy base. And I agree with, when we get into the fine details of what we're looking at in the plan here, I believe with Commissioner Gunkel and Commissioner Tan of the specifics they stated. I think, personally, I believe we created enough regulations and guidelines to give our developers direction they need to provide family-friendly housing. I think a majority of the guidelines in the new regulations are too specific and constrain creativity and cause problems with affordability. So I think we now need to put our energy into governance that make people want to move to Emeryville. So I think, for me, I'm having a hard time with adding more and more regulations. And when I see that page that we've gone from six bullet points to now three pages, and how specific they are, I think they're outside, I think outdoor space, where I can see the apartments, people use their balconies to store things. They don't use them for outside enjoyment. So I think demanding that every unit have a balcony or outdoor space is just going to push the cost up, and our affordability component is just going to go out the window. We need to look at things that make these houses more attractive to families, but still, they have to be affordable. And when I talk to the leasing agent at Emmy Apartments, studio starts at $2,200, and a three-bedroom is $4,100. I don't know who has a family that can afford $4,100 in rent. So we need to look at a broader picture than just specifically telling a developer how to build his apartments, although we do need to give them guidelines for what we think would help attract that. So those are my comments.
So first thing, I'm not going to talk very long, but I think we probably need to extend past 11:30. Is everybody in agreement with that? So do we want to say 11:40, 11:45? What do you guys think?
We can only go till 11:45.
Are we just giving comments, or are we trying to?
Well, we're, I mean, we're supposed to make a recommendation on this, and then also, we have kind of this continuing conversation about unit mix and things like that that we need to get through, so.
And to see how we can come to a vote on this thing. So many diverse opinions at this point.
I think we work till 11:45 and see where it gets us.
All right, well, I'll make a motion to extend to 11:45.
And I'll second it.
All right, anybody opposed? All right, great. So on this, I just, I don't know. I honestly, I have no idea. I, it's like, everyone who has spoken tonight has made a compelling argument, and everyone that has spoken tonight has said something different. And, yeah, so I'm just kind of left not knowing what to think. The one thing I can say is that, I think that there was, there was one thing that was removed that I didn't think should be removed, and that was sort of a requirement that all units, or something, or family-friendly units provide a certain amount of outdoor storage space. And I think that's actually really important. So I don't know if it belongs in the family-friendly section or in the general residential section, but I think it belongs somewhere. Yeah, and other than that, I really have nothing to add.
I do have a couple of things to add. And one of them is that I think that these guidelines are really important. I go back to, certainly, schools are important, parks are important. All of these things are important. But I go back and look at the unit mix that we have, and the fact that we have such a low percentage of housing that will accommodate families is just, I think it's embarrassing, and that's what the market has been driving so far. So I think we need to do very clear guidelines that encourage housing that families can stay in if they want to be here. And I think it is really important that we look at it a little bit more closely to find that balance where we're not precluding the affordability factor, because we really need, we don't need that many $4,000 three-bedroom units. We need some more affordable three-bedroom units, so that's important. But I really do appreciate the goals of these guidelines of making sure that the spaces, whether they're divided for living, dining, and, you know, kitchen and all that, or whether they're a great room concept, that they have the space that families need. So I think that there is a little bit more tweaking that needs to happen with these. I agree that there should be some flexibility in whether the spaces are divided or whether they're put together, but we need to have the proponents demonstrate that the spaces will work for the families that are in them. I think that it's also, it was a really good point. I spend a whole lot of time in my kitchen looking out of the window, and I know that when I was growing up, my mom was looking out the window from the kitchen, watching where I was going. So I think that that's, that's one that needs to be tweaked a little bit more. I also know that a lot of the small, open spaces that are provided, just because somebody has been required to provide an outdoor open space, do end up where people put their bicycle, their picnic table. They're just, you know, pile stuff in. So that may be, you know, trade-off between the common spaces that function well for everybody and the private spaces. I think we need to tweak it a little bit more to find that flexibility and balance that really encourages what we need. But I definitely think that these are important, and that they're a really, really good start.
And I mean, the reason to have the guidelines is, once we do, you know, fix, you know, improve the schools and improve on all of the things that will entice families into Emeryville, we want to actually have housing that would accommodate families, and not just a bunch of studios and one-bedrooms. So I think putting guidelines in place is, just making sure that they're, I mean, it's important to try to, again, strike that balance where you're preventing what you don't want, but you're also not preventing what you do want, or some of the flexibility or room-for-creative design that would, that would give you what you're looking for. And that's what, I mean, one thought was maybe, if one of the primary issues that you're seeing is percentage of living room, kitchen, dining space relative to the overall unit size, maybe it's a percentage guideline and not a guideline about, you know, distinctive spaces.
Yeah, I think we clearly have a problem. I mean, based on the unit numbers that we've been shown, and, you know, it's, I think, I agree that these guidelines are a good step in the right direction to solving them. It's, I don't know, it's just, as we've, as we've kind of considered them tonight and heard all these different things, it's just really hard for me to, it seems like there are a lot of, we're trying to respond to too many different types of families. You know, there are like infinite num, you know, different types of families, and we're trying to boil that down to something that's maybe too simplified. And, you know, I don't know, it just seems like a lot of these things, to me, just boil down to kind of personal preference. So, and it's just a really hard issue to solve, but we need to do something.
Chair Moss?
Yeah.
Could I just kind of summarize what I've heard? I've heard a number of you say, this is a good start. And when I was in architecture school, that was sort of a euphemism for, well, back to the drawing board. In a nice way. I think we've heard, I've heard maybe about a dozen very specific comments about some very specific issues, which are very helpful. I've heard about balance and flexibility quite a bit. And I think we could do something to address that, show options, you know. You lay the living and dining room out this way, or you could lay it out that way. You could have the laundry like this, or you could have it like that, or whatever. Clearly, you all are not ready to vote on this tonight. That's my sense, unless you disagree. So I think we need to massage this some more and bring it back at a future meeting. And it ties into this kind of overall game plan that I was referring to anyway. So, you know, I don't think it's the end of the world if we continue this to the next meeting, or even the meeting after that. But you've been, you've provided very valuable feedback.
The Housing Committee, and we're having a discussion on this same subject next week. Are we going to see the same point?
The Housing Committee?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, probably. And we'll probably get a lot of the same comments, which is fine.
Can I throw out an idea and see? I just kind of want to test the waters. But I'm just thinking, like, in terms of, like, maybe allowing more flexibility and doing some of these other things, what if, what if instead of being like a series of guidelines, this was more of like a menu? Like, do, you know, do three of the five following things, and then do, you know, eight of the following 10 things, or something like that?
Try your best to do these things.
I like guidelines.
I think that's confusing.
That's crazier.
All right.
Well, I just think you could, you could do three of the five, and two of the others would just completely make it not work as family-friendly.
Make a cruddy housing project.
Well, I mean, I think you'd have to group them so that they were all kind of similar, you know, like similar kind of categories, but I don't know. It just seems to me like maybe that's a way to give more flexibility.
Well, one, I mean, one, not exactly what you're saying, but one thing you could do would be to show two different ways to lay out a living room and dining room, and say, do it this way, or do it that way. You know, things like that.
Yeah, a big room or a small room. A big room or small rooms.
Yeah, but in both cases.
And why, you know, because we want quality of life.
Yeah, and in both cases have enough room for dining, you know, dining room table.
Yeah. It just seems to me like we're, sort of what I'm hearing is we want, we want people to do a lot of these things, but we don't want them to do necessarily all of these things because we want to give them flexibility to not do some of the things, so that's kind of what I was trying to get at.
And, you know, about the private open space, it occurs to me as I hear you all talking, we already have a requirement in our planning regulations for private open space for every unit and that can be traded for common open space at a two-to-one ratio. So, you don't have to have a private open space for every unit, but for all the units that you don't have private open space for, you got to provide that much more common open space.
And I find that more flexible and that's what I was driving at. I think that rather than specifying everyone has to have that, to use that menu is much better.
Well, yeah, and what this, what these, what these guidelines do is they basically say, no, every, every unit has to have the private open space. You could just get rid of that guideline completely.
Right.
And you'd still have it in the regulations if you want that flexibility. There's no need for a guideline for it, we already have it in the regulations.
Makes sense.
I mean, I think there's an art form to this and I, it's like, I've seen it with some cities where, you know, and I've, I've never, I've never really done a project in Emeryville, but some cities, I just find myself going through zoning requirements and all of a sudden it's like, wow, they're, they really thought through this and it's actually, it's pushing me in the direction, I can see that, you know, it's pushing me in the direction that they're, they're wanting developments in this area to actually, you know, achieve these goals. And there's an art form to that and I'm sure you guys will all figure, you know, work it out, but it's, you know, a lot of times it's about percentages and it's not about spelling out specific, you know, you know, specific things, but more percentages or formulas that you have to, you know, and then, but though there are some portions of this that I think really work, the stuff, you know, the new stuff regarding bedrooms and that not having to go through a living space to get from a bedroom to a bathroom, I think is a key one. Though, the only one master suite, I think that can have a lot of impact. So, I think there's certain components that will be very successful, but then some of the other ones, it sounds like we're talking about trying to find another way to address it, but it's not about losing the intention behind it, it's just about figuring out a way to address it that provides some room for flexibility and creativity and, and.
If you think of any of those zoning examples that you've worked under, I think that might be helpful.
Right now?
Well, not right now, but, you know.
When you see them.
In the future, if you, you know, if you happen to think of any, that might, you know, might be helpful.
And that's what I agree with. I mean, that's, I think we need more three-bedroom units and I, the thing I was getting at with this particular one is I think it's too specific and there's too many exacts, you got to do exactly this, you got to do exactly that. So, I like what you're saying of there are, I think, one master bedroom is something we could request, that makes sense. How a living room, dining room, kitchen is arranged, I think that's too draconian, I think that's too confining. So, I think that's, and I think maybe a place to start that would be low-hanging fruit is like the Toronto example or Go Higher. We're going to require that you do a minimum 12% three-bedroom units. I think that's a real simple thing that developers can follow and that might be a way that we could start by getting something and then, you know, if we need to tweak it and work out the details, we could do that.
And I think because we are so behind in how many three-plus bedroom units we have, we actually really need to beef that number up to 45%, frankly. And then of those, 35 to 45%, so we can get on board, we have, and of those, affordable units we need to have as well. And if we do it through, maybe we have to overhaul the bonus system and make that way more intense because that's the only way we're going to get what we want here. I feel, and I don't know how else.
Are you saying 45% three-bedroom or 45%?
You know, you're talking about matching the balance that our neighboring cities have, Berkeley and Oakland.
I think she's saying we need to be bold.
We need to be bold here if we're going to get what we want.
We just only allow single-family houses from now on, no more apartments, that'll solve the situation.
I'm just throwing it out there. We need to make up for what we've, we've already have enough.
Yeah. Yeah. One of the things I think is missing from our discussion is what our community thinks and having community input. So, I think as part of continuing this item that we want to consider, staff should consider having a town hall meeting because this is a major issue and it's something that we hear about from the public quite a bit when we have new housing developments coming forward. And I think that if we make a decision, you know, with the Planning Commission and City Council without having public, you know, having community input, we're going to miss out on, on that, that valuable input, so.
So, do we need a motion to continue this item?
No. You can just, the chair can just direct it to be continued.
We'll just continue it to a date uncertain.
I believe our consultant would like to say another quick thing.
Two, two quick things. One is I've heard a lot of what you're saying and I can see places to change some of the, of the diagrams and things and the wording and the system to create that flexibility and still get to, to an objective. So, not maybe everything, but a lot of things you've said, I can see, okay, there's ways to kind of get there. But the other thing is I want to say that was, I felt was really important, hearing your discussion, is that I've been doing a long time working with developers and applicants reviewing projects where cities have guidelines. And I think 75% of the role of the guidelines is to get something there to have the discussion around because it never really comes to where they, oh, this is what we have to do and they do it. What it does is it provides you a vehicle to talk with people about the issues and then rather than just react to their very specific proposal that you know doesn't meet your goals. So, really what we're trying to do here is get something there that really will bring that discussion when they come in and get closer to where you might want to be. So, that's the, I think, the main purpose is to get things that will bring that discussion forward. That's all, all I wanted to say.
Thanks.
We're going to keep discussing, that's for sure.
Sure. All right. So, we'll continue that to a date uncertain. Do we also want to, are we done with this or do we want to?
Charlie?
Because there was also this issue of whether we needed to initiate a change to the planning regulations.
Well, if you're not going to take action on the guidelines, I think that's sort of unnecessary at this point. We can tie it to your, we can tie it into your future action on the guidelines.
Okay. I was going to suggest that if we're looking at changes to the bonus program in the planning regulations, which is what this is tied to, right?
The family-friendly, yeah.
Yeah. That we look at, that we kind of look at the bonus program overall because that was something that the City Council also wanted to do.
Well, just to be clear, this kind of game plan that we're trying to put together, which will have dates for meetings and stuff and hopefully an end point when we get to the, you know, finish line in the not-too-distant future, is intended to encompass the gamut of everything that we've been tasked with looking at. So, it would be the bonus system, unit mix, family-friendly, affordable, ownership housing and anything else I've forgotten to mention.
Do you think?
And they're all, they're all so integral and they're all so interrelated that I think we need to be looking at the different pieces. I think looking at the family-friendly without looking at the bonuses is, it's sort of like looking at the marketplace development one piece at a time. It's just, we need to get the overview.
Do you think we will, you'll have that game plan all laid out for our next meeting?
Oh, I certainly hope so. I hope before that.
There are marching orders.
All right. Thank you. All right. Then with that.
I'd just like to make one commissioner comment real quick about the Emmy Apartments is they did start leasing this past weekend, they hope to start occupying in March and they are 20% occupied already. And they haven't even finished a complete week yet. Emmy Apartments, they're at 64th and Christie on the corner of the Marketplace.
And I'll say that I, and I'll say that I think that the Commonwealth little micro brewery on Adeline has opened now.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah. I can't guarantee it, but I think so. Anything else? All right. We're adjourned.